Let me call order the meeting. Rita, I'm just getting a little ahead of you, apologize.
It's all right, it just takes a little time to kick over after I push the button.
That's what happens to me when I wake up in the morning.
We're good to go now.
You do go, Paul?
Mr. Dougherty.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Yes.
And Murphy.
Yeah.
And Chairman Lyons.
Here.
Let the record show that our two alternates, Mr. Kent and Mr. Roche, are also present, excuse me, as is the town manager and the town attorney is absent with notice.
Let's go to the minutes, any comments, additions, revisions, conclusions. I will note that it was a... Thank you for doing such long minutes.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I don't have any comments.
My move, they accept it as presented.
A second. Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes. Additions, withdrawals, deferrals, arrangement of agenda items? I don't know of any.
I have none.
Okay. The next meeting is February 26, 2015. Rita, I'm gonna be out of the country. Hope the time will be here.
I'll be here.
Any other individuals who won't be?
Mr. Roche has advised that he most likely will not be here even. Everybody else all right?
I'm all country. I think at this one in the meeting, I asked if there had been any ex parte communications?
None.
None.
I had one brief one with Mr. Weiss, neighbor to the applicant on the replating, asking what it was all about, and I suggested he talk to the town hall. I had dinner with him last night, he talked to somebody, and he has, he's fine with it.
I didn't talk to him, but...
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. I guess we should go to the public hearing application for replating.
Would like to swear anybody in that intends to speak at this public hearing. Swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Richard Jones with Richard Jones Architecture in Delray Beach. Happy to be joined here today by Paul Engel from O'Brien Suter, O'Brien Surveyors, and I believe Mr. La Downey from Seaside Builders will also be joining us. We're here today to discuss the application for, is it a replat?
Yes.
A replat of the two lots at 3140, 3180 Polo Drive. This exhibit from Paul is the existing condition. There is a 3140 is the lot here to the center between the two adjacent lots, and 3180 is the larger lot on the corner of Palm Way and Polo Drive. You may remember this lot, 3140 came before you for a custom home that Seaside was planning to build and was subsequently approved. And since that approval, there has been a new buyer of the property, and the new buyer's wish is to split these lots or shift them, if you will, into a different configuration, which is shown in this exhibit. And this essentially takes the larger lot, 3180, and the smaller lot, 3140, and flips them. And so you might ask, what is the purpose of that? Well, certainly, the center lot is much better situated to take advantage of the water access. And so by flipping the two and creating two conforming lots of 16,509 and 29,318...
Square footage?
Square footage. It allows the new owner of the property to show or to develop the property as two independent lots and two independent houses. Now, Mr. La Downey is still involved, he's going to be the builder of these properties. And again, he will be here shortly. But if I may show you a color exhibit, which is a little bit easier perhaps to follow, you will see that the two lots being developed are within the guidelines, Gulf Stream guidelines, they meet the FAR requirements for individual lots, and they two independent and self-sustaining houses. The owner is actually one of the new owners of one of the Harborview lots that you may be familiar with. And so we are currently working with them on the designs of the two houses. Significant progress has been made, and we can show you floor plans of each one, first and second floor. We don't have elevations yet, and have yet to have a pre-app with the town on these two houses. But these floor plans are about 95% complete. The smaller house on 3180 has a square footage of about 5447 under roof, and the larger lot, 3180, has a square footage of approximately 8322 under roof. Both lots will utilize the special exemption for additional covered roof up to 300 square feet, I believe, that's in the zoning code.
Special exception?
Special level exception, yes. And we highlight that square footage as roughly 262 on the larger lot and 98 on the smaller lot. So those are the approximate square footage of these houses. They may fluctuate up and down a few square feet as we refine the design. But as you can see, the site plan is well along as are the floor plans. We don't expect any significant changes. But most importantly, to note, this property or what you're reviewing today as far as a replat, there is no intention of coming back with, I guess, a one large house on both parcels, which we, our clients heard that some of the residents are concerned about. And that is not the case. And I can provide these exhibits as examples of what's being proposed on those two lots. And we will be back before you probably within the next, I would say, two months, likely the March board meeting of this board, to review the house designs, complete with elevations and renderings and the rest of the landscape and whatever else is required. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this application.
Mr. Jones, can I ask you about the site plan? And I know we're sort of getting ahead of ourselves, because that's not what your application's about. Do you have a sense of the relationship of the square footage on the second floor to the first floor in the larger home?
Yes, I do. The second floor living space... I can bring that sugar that floor for a minute. The second floor living space is 1,995 square feet of the 8,300. So it's roughly about 25% of the ground square footprint. And as you can see, a significant portion of the house is one-story, with just the center portion and the portion that is due west to the intracoastal as two-story. The same is, as he said, for the corner lot, where you see even a smaller percentage, I believe, of the house is two-story, with several portions of it as one-story. So you'll have that wedding cake kind of effect. It does, it is a good massing or a good way to design a house to reduce the massing to the adjacent neighbors. And both houses exhibit that same design with regards to stepping down on either side.
Well, I think that's a real compliment to Polo Drive, because a lot of homes are still single-story. Obviously, in the core district, you can build two-story. In fact, you can put a lot of the square footage in the second floor is great, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Prior to the meeting, I did some homework because I was a little disoriented as to what this really meant to the neighbors and so on. So let me, for the benefit of the rest of the board here, give you some information, which I developed with help of Mr. Thrasher and Rita. The property immediately to the south, could you give us the replating? To the larger lot to your left, that address is 525 Middle. Some people might know as the Pink House, the Weiss House. The gross lot there is about 30,000. And you're proposing here 29... I'm trying to remember now. So in terms of uniformity, it's not so different. Now, obviously, the property to the north, which is your second lot, that's a small property. But directly across the street, some people may know as the Dragus House, that home is 31,461 in square footage. So for the benefit of everybody here, at least you have a sense of what the neighboring lots are like. And in fact, Rita pointed out to me that I think the Weiss property, that lot, was not in any recent time, when the Weiss House was built, that lot had already pre-existed, it wasn't like they combined two lots.
That's true.
I think it was to all these, or I think...
Are you not wrong, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yeah, it is two lots. I mean, some of these houses, it took three lots and put one lot on, in other words, Mrs. Jones's old house and my house, we actually share a lot. So it's just some people decided when they build a house, they said, we'll take two lots, we'll take one lot, we'll take, each take one and a half lots. And I believe, if I'm not correct, is that the, that line that you have for the smaller lot, dividing the new smaller lot and the bigger lot, that was the actual lot before, is that correct? Or is that...
Not quite.
No.
It was moved slightly?
This, this line on the original lot was a little further north.
A little further north, yeah.
But in a replat, it has to be there in order to have the minimum 16,500 for a minimum lot size.
Maybe what I was trying to emphasize was, you know, we're not having this big creep right now. Every time a house gets torn down, they buy another lot to bring them together and make it big and bigger. The older house, now how long that older house has been there, have been sitting on that same piece of dirt, right?
Right.
And so it's been there for many, many years.
As a single lot, you got built in the early 60s, or... Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to point out some of those, that points.
Richard, how big was the lot on the left that the house was on that had been approved to build? Now, that was on a non-conforming lot. Correct, Paul? It was less than 16,500? It was 13, almost 14.
Really, that's how it was only a three-bedroom house?
A little under 14, yeah.
And as a matter of fact, I did bring that exhibit that shows the existing residents on the large lot and the house that was approved. And again, it's only a three-bedroom house. And so it's also important to note on the proposed site plan, I believe you referred to this lot as the Weiss residence. Even though a 15-foot setback is required, we're gonna propose 20 here. So the house, even though it's one-story on the end, it's pushed even further away from this existing residence. And very generous 55-foot setback along here to the next, to the property line, and then of course the 15 and the 20 that's required for that lot. So looking at what's there, looking at the neighborhood context, you know, we feel these two, this replat and the two proposed houses are well within the context of the architecture and the massing on that street.
And by the way, the progression is a very good one. I don't know whether it was rumor, possibility, but we were talking at one time, 13,000 plus on one possibility. I don't know whether that was gonna happen or not, but let's leave it at that. But the fact that we're... And also, I think Mr. Smith makes a good point. The proposal you made on this lot before was a much smaller lot, and I think much more of the massing was in the second, it was more of a block, right?
Yes.
And so by relocating the property lines, more of the square footage of the home is being put on the one-story.
That's correct.
That's good.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I'm talking too much.
You mentioned you'd seen one of the neighbors' boards. Is there any feedback, Rita, from any of the other neighbors?
No.
No, okay.
Excuse me, I'm a neighbor, I'm actually probably more affected by it.
Yeah, so we should have public comment.
Yep.
At this time, does he need to be sworn in or not?
Yep. I'm happy to be sworn in. I'm Peter Klein, I live at 3157 Polo, which is...
Right there.
Swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you got it? Thank you.
Sorry, Peter, you live across the street.
Yeah, I live opposite.
Would you step to the microphone?
Smaller lot, east, due east of it.
Directly across the street. I live directly across the street of 3157.
You live across the street from it?
No, but okay. I live between Luke and Williams. Picture it? Go.
I'm right.
Okay. No, I've got a question in the comments. So the comment is, my name is terrific, and so I have no objection to it. It's the guy's gonna look at it every day. The question is, do you plan to develop both lots at the same time? Yes. Okay, good answer. That's all I have to say.
Is one a custom for the owner and its second is a spec home?
The intent is that the second will likely be a residence for the owner's in-laws. And it may at some point, you know, become a house that could be sold. But it's being designed as two independent and separate houses. And, you know, that's the thought, that it'll be a guest house for the owner's parents and in-laws.
But construction will be currently, so...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That'll be during one project and not two.
Absolutely, it'll be one project for both houses.
By the way, when this subject came up on the original plan, Mr. La Downey represented that he would make every effort to keep most of the trucks and vehicles on the property and not on the street.
That's correct.
So that's gonna be important. We got two houses being built, it'd be a nightmare.
That's all I have to say, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And if there are no further questions...
No.
Motion, please?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, if you mind it. Got it. I can make a motion to recommend approval of all Level 3 architectural site plan based on a finding that the proposed replating of lots 5, 6, and 7 Gulf Stream Cove subdivision as recorded in Plaid Book 24, page 185, Public Records in Palm Beach County, Florida, total of 45,827 square feet or 1.05 acres, more or less, into two lots. 3180 Polo Drive being Lot 1, a total of 16,509 square feet. 3140 Polo Drive being Lot 2, a total of 29,318 square feet, meet the minimum intent of the design manual and applicable review standards.
I'll second that.
Mr. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you. And then I have a question actually of the board. I'm looking at the next item on the agenda, and being that we're here with, I think I had said 95% completed site plan, floor plans, and now I see setbacks on second floor in percentage. And so I'm just curious as to, I guess I should just sit in and listen in and see what...
You're welcome to sit in. I don't see that this discussion is applicable to your proposed application.
Okay.
But please go free to do so.
But it might be applicable to the proposed applications for the houses when we bring them in next month, or...
I don't think so. It's a small percentage of second-story coverage.
Okay. The number's about 70%, you're at 20.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're so, you're so far. You're so far. Yeah, you're so far inside.
Weren't you 25 or 30% upstairs on both?
Yeah. Were you on the lower one, you didn't tell us.
Yeah, what about the little one? Uh, the little up and down.
The smaller one might be higher.
The smaller lot has 1,342 of the 5,400, so that, again, that's roughly about 25.
So if you hurry up and leave, Mr. La Downey will be here less than one minute.
Okay. A setback on the second floor, the initial setback, is that gonna be front elevation or is that side elevation?
But, you know, it's discussion.
Okay.
I'm not sure what this board will do.
Okay.
I can tell you that it's a section of the code that we think is not working as intended.
And I can follow up with you after today on that?
I'll just give you a rule. First of all, you have not presented an application. So whatever design change or code changes has to be approved by the commission and things that this needs to select. By the time that you get your application in, the existing code as written will apply to your application.
Okay.
If I make that clear.
So if we're, if we come before you by March 1st with a pre-app, would any additional setback for a second floor be changed from what's in the code now?
Is there else on that?
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It was a very brief appearance.
Very quick flow through, Tom, man.
I see.
Okay, let's go to item 7. The incentive floor area ratio, blah, blah, blah. A setback on the second floor, and then I think we were looking at it comprehensively in terms of amount of square footages on the second floor as a percentage of the first. Maybe, Mr. Thrasher, you can remind us of where we were and where we're trying to go?
All right, thank you. We are discussing Section 70-71, which is floor area ratio, subsection C, which is incentive floor area ratio. That subsection has two additional subsections that are under discussion. Mr. Marty Meyer of Urban Design Kill Day Studios was intending to be here today as a blue and did not work yesterday nor is he working today, so he's not here. I've had conversations with him, and I asked him if there was a way that he might be able to develop a modification to the code and to the code have it remain basically intact with certain additional language. And in essence, he could not, he does not recommend that. And his recommendation is to eliminate both subsections 1 and 2, just eliminate the incentive altogether. He also had two people in his office look at trying to modify the language, come up with ideas and recommendations, and they did not come up with anything. So his recommendation is that to eliminate them. It was something that was created perhaps as a reaction to something that existed, and we have seen examples of how it could be designed in such a way that is a loophole in regards to mass and square footage.
Any discussion, questions?
I know, just in general, and reviewing this whole, this house that they're proposing is gonna have a two-story section of the house 20 feet from the street, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be very close to a corner, which is gonna give a very vertical type of appearance to this entire property. I think that when we look at it in the, on the plot, and everything looks okay. But when you see two stories 20 feet off the street, it's gonna be an incredibly imposing vertical component. And what I see, you know, in the tab, is that there was actually a proposal years ago, which was a discussion, it wasn't even brought up to be made code, but that no two-story houses could be constructed on corner lots. What we have going on here, two-story...
I'm not so sure if Weiss discussed that application.
That application, okay. But just, but just in general, well, this, but these, the two-story, I think that it's important when we just, when we talk about, and we don't have any direction from Urban Design Studios yet, but setbacks to the second floor, I would say, it's more important when we discuss the second, the ratio between the second story and the first story. It's not so much the ratio, and I think we could set some number, maybe 80%. Second story couldn't be more than 80%. But it's more important where the second story massing is. And where we have the side setbacks, especially when you have 20 feet in, two stories up, is gonna be an incredibly imposing vertical format, not unlike the two houses that flank Lakeview Road. And it's gonna be, I think that aesthetically, people are gonna, when they look at it, are gonna be, you know... And right now, the rest of the street, except for down to the very end, Polo and Gulfview Road, there's a two-story house that's set way back from the street, from both street corners. But this direction we're going, where we have the houses right up at the edge of the setbacks, we really have to control the air, where the second story sits. If the second story sits in the middle of the lot, then you have the first story, then you have the second story, you don't get that vertical component. You don't get that vertical component. But I think that the way I like to see the new wording go is that it, is it forces the second story massing more towards the center of the lot. When I talk about this, I think it's more important that we, not, not for the Ocean District, not for the South District, but more for the core and plus SLA, where you have smaller lots and houses closer together and things like that.
So, sort of the dissect what you just said. We have the setback of twenty feet. I suppose one way to deal with the massing is change the setback. You're not proposing that, you're talking more about a wedding cake pushing, sort of, or pushing it, squeezing it back into the property.
Into, yeah, put it, get the, get the two-story massing centered on the property.
Would this be only for a corner lot or would this be a general rule?
I think just a general rule, so that when you have houses that aren't even on corner lots, the neighbors aren't seeing, going in, I mean, it could be fifteen feet. As my friend, well, I think that the code does address that to some, I mean, I think that the code really does address getting the, in the general discussion. In other words, when they talk, when we talk about the town Gulfstream and the appearance, that in the core, right now, you can't build two stories right up to the twenty-foot setback. Which would be the side setbacks, not the, not the front setback. But I do feel that that's, that's very important, that we don't have two-story walls going up only twenty feet off of a property line. And then, and then the way to address that would be that the, the massing has to be more centered on the property.
Well, would be my suggestion, we, you know, we go back to when we created this incentive. It was in reaction to, in response to the property in Gulfstream where, you know, it's on a corner and it just looks like one big block.
Yeah.
And we didn't accomplish what we wanted. So I, I think we need, from Mr. Minor, some language that tries to capture this, this notion that Ula has.
Well, may I?
Sure.
Just talking off the top of my head, Rita, please feel free to add comments or correct me as you believe. We not only created the incentive language, but we also reduced the second story coverage. It went from seventy-five percent, say, for example, in the core, down to seven. And also Ocean West and Beach Park went from a hundred to seven, same, same percentage across the board. The code does say that the second story setback, the minimum of which will be an additional five foot from the, from the ground level setbacks, which means that this second story will be five foot back or twenty-five foot back. And now I'm wanting to recall conversations from our architects that we've heard that encourage us not to tie their hands as it relates to creative styles and things of this nature. And so I, I question whether or not requiring it to be in the middle of the home, positioned in the center is in our best interest, architecturally speaking. And then I'm trying to look at something of that nature in my mind, trying to review an application. Just exactly how am I to determine that this is centrally located, if that's the direction you want to go? So in your discussion, I just throw these thoughts of mine out for your consideration, additional consideration for that, which Mr. Jones has stated. And also ask Rita if you have any general comments in this regard.
Yeah, I do. I am inclined to agree that it should not be mandated that the second story be actually centered. I mean, you've taken away a lot of, of the architects' expertise, so to speak, to alter the design. If you require all of them to be centered, then if you've got two or three houses, three or four houses in an area, they're all going to look the same. I mean, we're trying not to have cookie cutters. I can understand this requiring the second story to be back farther on the side from a corner. I'm not so sure if it's necessary to have it for anything except what's on a corner. Because you handle, usually handle that with various landscaping and what in between the houses. But I think it would be a bad thing to require that the second story be centered in every lot.
I don't mean, I don't mean centered.
Centered, yeah.
No, I don't mean like it has to be like, you know, take the lot and buy it in two.
But just withdraw it.
Buy it in half, but it just can't all be, the massing can't all be on one end. And which, which, you know, a design could have all the massing at one end, which in this case, you know, well, we don't want to discuss what's coming up, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't really.
We absolutely do not, Mrs. Jones is right.
Yeah. But, but it, but that doesn't apply. I'm talking about beyond this application, because this application falls within the guidelines as we speak, yeah.
Ask a question. And I apologize if I was not here for your presentation, if you presented about the setbacks. It's just that, you know, currently, in addition to the two houses that you saw that were close to submitting, we're designing two other houses on Oleander that face A1A side by side. So that's four houses, and this may have a significant impact as to all the work we're currently doing. And so the proposal is for an additional five-foot setback on a front elevation?
We, we don't know where we're at.
Don't know where, yeah.
Let me, yes, I want to, and I also want to correct myself. And make sure that I don't direct myself to anything that you've said in, in your earlier meeting, discussion. Presently in the code, it requires that the second story setback shall be at a minimum additional five foot from the ground level setback, but only on the front setback. And we are seemingly having problems with the side of these homes. So definitely, I think that you should consider that this additional five foot be on all setbacks, which goes a long ways to perhaps accomplishing what you want to do.
And so, and excuse my unfamiliarity, unfamiliarity with that section of the code.
Okay.
Because we've, we've submitted six or seven or eight houses now. And the code presently states that, is this in certain sections? Is it in the core or the Ocean West? The second floor has to be an additional five-foot setback from the minimum?
Perhaps it would be easier if I, if I give you this book here such you are an architect and making comments on our behalf. And then refer to section seventy dash seventy-three, for members who are moving up the beat. This is what we're talking about, this is the setbacks, it's talking about. So the second story.
I want to agree sort of with you while we're reading that, is that many of these homes have a front that's on one street and a side that's on another street. And so I think the corners do need to be addressed different than maybe in a lot that's between two other lots that may be on corners. So I think that's where most of the comments have been coming from, is the wall up effect.
Yes.
So I do think that when we address setbacks on, on the side of a home, I was going to ask, but it's not really his home, which is the front of that home. Is it going to face on the side street or is it going to face on, oh, you know, we haven't determined yet.
Going to be thirty-one eighty Polo.
Okay, so it's going to face on the Polo. So we're going to have a real long run there, and I think that we need to, need to dress like.
I'm sorry.
No.
We absolutely cannot be referring to this application at all.
This is for, this is for down the road, this is for the next one.
Any home built on any corner lot.
Thank you.
And again, that code states, one or more of those four design features shall be incorporated. But it doesn't say all four, is that correct?
You, you are correct. It says one or more of the four.
And if you, if you include one.
Require.
I'm sorry.
If we were to require that that second story be set back some distance from the first story setbacks, it's a, it's an option. So a architect can choose one of these four.
I believe, and I am familiar with that section.
Variate, huh?
I am familiar now with that section. It was one or more to achieve, a, a breaking down of the mass, if you will.
Yes.
Okay.
So arcade, balconies, front porch. And then this additional setback. I, I, I do believe that unless you make that a required, requirement of some type, that setback or whatever, you, you're leaving it to the discretion of the architect, some of which acknowledge our desire to reduce mass and understand.
I mean, if I, if I may, I'm sorry. If I could just provide a little comment on that. In addition to Gulfstream, we designed a lot of houses in the beach area of Delray, according to the beach property owner guidelines. And they do require the side setbacks to be an additional five feet. That's not an option, it's something that you have to do.
From the first floor?
From the first floor.
On all sides.
The sides to a, to an abutting property owner. They also give you the, the ability to double stack, they call it, you know, not have a setback.
Right.
But, but provide an additional five-foot base setback. So instead of, you know, say twenty feet, and your second floor is at twenty-five, you can do both floors at twenty-five, which, which helps as well. But when you look at the design of a two-story, design of a two-story home, certainly the ones we showed and others that we've designed, and, and especially in Delray, the scaling back on the sides to an adjacent property of five feet is, is actually a good idea and makes for a pleasing design. But a front elevation is kind of a sacred elevation, if you will, that faces the street. And if you're setting in on the sides, you're naturally going to have some portions of one story facing the street. But requiring the whole front's elevation to be set back an additional five feet really handcuffs you as far as, you know, how creative you can be on a design. Because then essentially, you, you don't have any real true two-story facades, which, you know, could be, you know, very pleasant. And so, you know, my feelings on, on that five-foot setback is it has to be, you know, you'd have to characterize it in a certain way, where, where you would like to see it and what percentage, maybe a percentage of the front elevation.
Yes.
Ten percent of the front elevation has to be set back on the second floor an additional five feet, or twenty percent or something like that. But to take away the ability to double stack, you know, dining room and living room with bedrooms above, you know, I, I think it really compromises the design.
We do allow it double stacked on the front elevation.
Yeah, you know, you allow it now.
Yeah.
But I'm saying if, if, if the additional five feet becomes, as Bill is saying, you know.
Mandatory.
Mandatory on all the elevations, and then it really.
No, I don't think we're going there.
Okay.
I don't, but.
No, that's fine.
I don't think we're talking about that.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm. Or if it is double stacked, have the whole, the whole, the footage increased, is what I think you were saying. So to make it thirty feet rather than twenty feet, just so that you don't get that wall effect on either a front or a side, is what we're. Put it further back in the property, set the home further back just so that you don't have the altitude of the, of the building too close to the road. Isn't that what, what you're saying too?
That's what Delray, that's what Delray allows, but again, you know, an additional five feet on a two-story house, whether it's twenty-five to thirty, I mean, you don't really notice much of a difference.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be better as a percentage of the elevation.
Right.
Now, if your front elevation is a hundred feet wide, or let's just say a standard size lot, your front elevation is about seventy feet wide, then maybe fifteen percent, twenty percent of that seventy feet, you know, needs to be one story so that, you know, you don't have a seventy-foot wide two-story home. Maybe on the second floor, only fifty of the seventy feet. And, and that's, you know, and, and leave it up to the architect to decide maybe where that twenty percent, one story, could be located, rather than having it, you know, right in the center or, so those are some options.
And that would get the, that would achieve getting the massing towards the center of the, of the lot.
Yes.
Yeah, Curtis, my instinct, it's only my opinion, I obviously not going to always agree, particularly in districts like the core, you know, the small lots, and pushing it back another five feet really doesn't accomplish much, in my opinion. Of pushing a whole setback and still having the block. But if you change the relationship of the first floor and the second floor with some setback on the sides, and maybe, as you were proposing, some percentage in the front, because we don't want the front totally blocked on.
Yeah.
We want to have it in and out, I don't know how to describe that architecturally. But one way you can do it is with percentage, and you'd have to say you'd want it to spread in some way, you don't want it just in one quarter, right? You're letting me have it.
Yeah.
I, I think it's been a good discussion how do we capture some of these ideas? Again, I think it's, and then we need to discuss it further, but.
Yeah. Bill, can I ask you in the minutes, you said, you know, essentially there are two properties that, so, not so inventive, but were creative on this incentive, right? Were the other, have you ever, are there other architects who've come in and said, this gives us some of the latitude? Do they, if you like, play by what we intended to, or basically are the only two occasions that this has been brought into play? Has it been circumvented? Because it strikes me, if you put a line through it, then we're, you know, eliminating some of the latitude we're trying to build into the architects.
I.
I'm just wondering if we could, oh, sorry.
I just think that the incentive section that we added does not add value to what we're striving for. That our task would be this setback, additional setback on the second story, which would accomplish a lot. Now, if I understood Mr. Jones correctly, he felt like the front, you know, could typically, and we see it a lot, I think, is balconies and things of this nature, that those are additional architectural elements appear on the front. So to me, it breaks it up a bit, but, but the, but the side streets on the corner, that wall of, of, of look could be accomplished by good language that requires an additional setback in that area. Or, or, or something near that. Is that, Mr. Jones, would you say that's what you were commenting about in regards to the front elevation and so on? Actually, say it again.
Well.
Do it again, Sam.
You know, naturally, if you're going to require side setbacks to have an additional five foot on the second floor, then naturally that's going to relate to the front elevation.
Okay.
So a portion of the front elevation will show or reduce the mass, you know, and again, that wedding cake, if you will. That five feet on either side, that equates to ten feet, which on a, I guess a hundred-foot wide house is, is ten percent. I don't think there are a lot of hundred-foot wide houses being, you know, being proposed, but on a seventy-five-foot wide house, I guess that maybe goes up to fifteen percent or so, I can't do the math in my head. But yes, that does, that does help. But yes, that does, that does help with the massing. Maybe in relation to also, you know, the balconies or the logias or the front porches could help. But again, you, you definitely wanna have some of the, of the front elevation of the house be able to double stack, because there's several great examples of that, you know, throughout the town. It's just a question of how much, how much you want to allow that, what you want that percentage to be of a front elevation. So. I hope that.
What's going to Delray, did you say that they have a spend where the second floor has to be set back five feet on the sides?
Sides, side elevation, yes, you, they give you the option. You can either set the whole house back an additional five feet and double stack, or you could set the second floors back an additional five feet and.
What's your opinion about doing everything back? I think I heard your opinion already.
Well, you know, it, there's, in some instances, being able to set it back an additional five feet and keep the two-story helps. It's nice to have that option. Myself, I prefer when the second floor on the sides is an additional five feet, because then you get some lower one-story elements, you know, to your neighbors. That one story, since it, since it is one story and it only has a beam height of, say, twelve feet, doesn't really have an impact on the neighbors. So, but, you know, to take away the option to double stack with an additional five feet really limits the creativity.
On sides or are you talking the front?
Well, on the front, I, I feel you have to have a, a portion of the front. A, a good portion of the front should be able to double stack. On the sides, it's nice to have the option, should you need, you may have a large gathering room that's two-story and it touches a side elevation. And, you know, you may wanna keep it two-story and, and pull it back five feet to be able to keep that room two-story versus having that room two-story and then there's another five feet on the ground floor that you have to either do something with in that room or have it as a separate room, you know, it, it, it's nice to have the option.
What if you had seventy percent of it had to be pushed back five feet? Or some percentage as opposed to all of it?
You're talking about when you're double stacking or?
On the side.
On the side.
Yeah, so not having a hundred percent setback five, but seventy percent or fifty percent.
Yeah, a percentage, a percent, if you don't wanna have the option of saying either push it all back five feet or take the whole second floor back five feet, that would be one way to kind of capture the intent. Is say up to seventy percent of a side elevation facing an adjacent property owner is required to have an additional five foot setback. And then that gives you, you know, because a lot of the houses in Gulfstream, you know, the lots are, are deep. So, you know, the house may be a hundred and fifty feet deep, which allows you the option to be able to double stack a, a portion of that. So, yeah, I think that would be good, good as far as the side elevations. On the front, I'm not sure what that percentage would be. But it would be much less, it would be much less than the, than the seventy. If you had to do that on the front, I would say, well, you're gonna naturally, if you've gotta be seventy percent on the sides, then you're automatically gonna be at least ten percent on the front, just, just by doing the math. But, you know, maybe the front could be, you know, anywhere somewhere between ten and, you know, fifteen percent. So that you get a little bit more, maybe in the center of the house, you know, where the entry is, you know? But, you know, certainly the entire elevation on the front would, would not be recommended to be additional off of setback.
Let me ask you a philosophical question. There, there is language in the manual that talks about massing and some more subjective terminology when you submit an application, that we as a board have to look at that context and see if it meets a series of what I call soft criteria supposed in numbers. And if we just left the front elevation as is and then a member of this board says, you know, it's the massing, the front's too much, it's, in our opinion, because there's a prohibition about, and I, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but massing, mentioned like, we would reject it. So here's the dilemma, you don't know exactly what you're jumping into.
Right.
Do you have any thoughts generally about that, that point about we can have it very rigid, but as Rita promptly points out, becomes cookie cutter? We certainly don't want that.
Right, I agree.
We certainly don't wanna deny some architectural invention or creativity that could be complimentary to the district and that'd be a shame. On the other hand, if we leave it too open and we say, no, you spent all this time and you're, you know, what's wrong with this board?
Well, right, you, certainly the architectural board, you know, being a little bit more in tune with the aesthetics, you know, could deny it based on they feel that the massing is too much, even though it meets the code. Of course, then once it goes to a city commission, then that's a different story.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but the massing is in the code. So you would not be in compliance with the code.
Okay.
Okay, you'd be in compliance with one section of the code, but not in another, right?
Essentially.
It's, it's unarbitrary, I mean, it's, it's very clear what it says in this.
And the massing talks, in, in the section of the code on massing talks about neighborhood compatibility, not bill, I was gonna say.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just. I, I know, I think I know what we're discussing here, but one definition of excessive, being excessively massive or by, by one architect may not be the same as another, so. I, I think that, obviously, I'm a numbers guy, so I, I, I just feel that things should, if they can be articulated clearly, that should be the number one goal.
Certainly doing it as a percentage, like you had mentioned, you know, seventy percent of a side elevation or whether it's fifty percent. If it's a percentage, then it leaves a lot of flexibility for the architects, I, I feel. Because it's not dictating where that fifty percent needs to be on an elevation, on side elevation or whether it's ten percent of a front elevation, it doesn't necessarily say it has to be in the center.
Just a percentage of it.
Right, a percentage, a percentage of.
By the side.
Right, a percentage of the elevation. And a corner lots, a corner lot may have its own percentages and own locations of where that stepping down needs to occur. You know, perhaps, you know, you know, on a corner lot, the first thirty feet measured along the side elevation from the front prop, from the front setback, you know, needs to be additional setback. So that assures you that your corner is gonna be one story and then maybe a two-story portion. And I'm only using, you know, I hate to pull out the board, one of the boards as an example for the lot we just discussed, I could. But, you know, on, on the corner house there, we have a one-story element on the corner for roughly about thirty feet, twenty-five or thirty feet. And then we have about twenty-five or thirty feet of two-story element stacked. But we have a balcony.
Yeah.
On that side. And then we go back to another sixty or so feet of one story. So it kind of breaks up the massing, but still has a little bit of two-story on the side elevation. Because you gotta think about a side street. It's a twenty-foot setback. A side street, we like to design a side street elevation to almost look like a front elevation. It, it should, because it, it, it addresses the right of way. And so I think a portion of a side street elevation should be allowed to double stack, but certainly much less than a front elevation, so.
That's good. Any other comments? I may, I make a recommendation. I don't mean to hit the can down the road, but I think, do you think it's necessary for Mr. Minor to give us some thoughts, captions, some notions? Either whether you wanna summarize it for him or I can draw you.
Ideally, I'll have him listen to the tape.
Oh, perfect.
Do we wanna take any action on striking the one?
Can't, you go probably.
No, we can wait, we can wait to do it all.
Yeah, it's, it's still your recommendations that won't be going to the commission. We're not going to be sending them until we're all, until you're completely done.
Well, and that particular part is under a restriction anyway.
Oh, that's right, that's very good to know.
Okay. Can't use it right now. Mr. Chairman, may I make just one, two, three presentations?
Sorry, and I'd love to hear your comment on those two. It's just. You know, this really came up with the, with the Gulfstream school, where, where we set a, a massing area on the property where Gulfstream School could build two stories. And I said, I just, to sort of make it simpler, what I wanted to, what I would propose that we do is that we have two sets of setbacks. One set of setbacks for the first story of a house, which would be more generous and just keeping right within the guidelines that we already have. But then the, what I like to see is have a window, have a second set of setbacks for the second story that would be, and the setbacks would be greater than the first story. But say to, and leave it up to the architect, but say, this is the footprint that you can build a one-story structure, in other words, you can build your leaves up to within the guidelines in this area for a one-story house. Anything you do with the second story has to fit in within a second set of guidelines. So you can do two-story anywhere, and let's say this is the front elevation of a house. You could have double stack all the way to the back, but on the sides and in the front, have additional setbacks and just to, just to, so that everybody will be quite clear as to the single-story window being more generous, the two-story window for building be this. So it'd just be in effect a first-story set of setbacks and then combined with a more restrictive second-story set of setbacks. So that you have a window within which to work.
Right.
And that's, that's very simply, you know.
And I, I think.
It would be an envelope.
An envelope.
Yeah, two.
First story envelope and second story envelope.
Right.
Work within that, everybody's happy, it'll be very simple from a code perspective and I think from a, from a, it would just make everything very straightforward. Instead of trying to say.
If, if I may, you referred to this as the front.
This is, well, this could be, well, this would be the front, because you have to have a more, you have to have a, the setbacks greater for the front.
Right.
So if you wanted to have, you know, stacking, you could do it anywhere along here.
So you'd have to, so again, that would be if you wanted to double stack, you would have to do an additional five foot first floor setback in order to be a double stack.
Which is, which is in keeping with the Gulfstream.
Right.
Architectural styles, is that we tend to have, you know, if you wanna do stacked, you do it here. If you wanna have a single story, it can be anywhere in this more generous window.
And, and going back to, you know, just to reference Delray again, right now, what they have is, is the opposite, this being the front and you, it's required five foot additional size and rear to the adjacent property owners, especially the one in the rear, and, but no additional five on the front. But based on what you're saying, that goes back to the option. You can either, you know, set back the additional five or double, on the second floor, or double stack with an additional five foot ground floor setback. I think that's what you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and just two windows and then give the architects complete freedom within the, within the.
So you, you could double stack twenty-five feet in, you could double stack the whole thing.
You double stack the whole house with additional five foot setbacks.
You want that?
Well, no, no, it, well, that's the thing, I don't know, but see, I don't, I see, we talk about five feet, but I, I really think that if, if you did an analysis of all the architecture in Gulfstream, you would find that the second story setbacks are much more restrictive. In other words, it's more like ten feet, you know, except for, you know, the house that's on the the corner of Lakeview and Gulfstream Road. I think you'll find that most of the houses in, in Gulfstream have a, a much greater setback on the side, only because we have in the past required that this, that this part of the house is, is centered. I don't mean centered right in the middle of the lot, but that there is, in other words, so that the neighbor, if he stands over here, looks up more like this. So that the first story massing is, and the, and the second story, if you stand here, you see this roof, then you see this roof off in the distance. You know, and, and by doing more than five feet gives you, gives the architects an incentive to have a, a first story section here and here and then get the, this, the, the second story more in the middle of the lot. So it's not, so the neighbors don't have to go for the two-story thing. I think that, I think that five feet is too generous, I think it should be more like ten feet for the additional setback for these, for the, the two-story part.
And I, and I completely agree, you know, I, and I got a lot of the houses that, that we've worked before this board had a lot of stepping down to one story in, in certain areas, but this, leaving it like this, it's, you know, it's, it's basically a hundred percent. You know, it's either, it's either a double stack at ten feet back or the second floor is set back five feet for the entire.
Well, we do, but we do have the seventy percent, in other words.
Well, seventy percent is the MAF, is the FAR, seventy percent.
Well, seventy percent of the, the second story, in other words, because of the regulation saying only seventy percent, you couldn't fill in this entire area with two-story.
Right, no, exactly.
That you'd have, you'd have to get that seventy percent within this area.
Right, right, for the FAR for the second floor, but again, having the whole setback on, like this limits the ability to, to have a portion double stacked where you may want to provide that, whether it's, you know, right in the center or, you know, one portion of the size.
Well, you could double stack all around.
But if you would do, if you do it, you could double stack the whole thing, but with an additional, well, we talked, said five feet and then you said ten feet, so. But I think one of the gentlemen, maybe Mr. Mr. Smith, you, you had mentioned, you know, five feet, you know, is enough to, to double stack, but it, but again, once you, you gotta remember, we're not dealing with large lots here in Gulfstream. So once, you know, a ten-foot additional side setback, when you're already at fifteen, to go to twenty-five on the sides and a lot of lots are only a hundred feet, now you have a fifty-foot, you know, you have, yeah, now you have a fifty-foot wide house. And so then, you know, it kind of makes it a little difficult.
But it'll only be, but it'll be a fifty-foot wide, but the, but it's, it's this part. And I think the one thing that, I mean, our houses, some of our small lot, two-story houses do look somewhat cookie cutter, because the, the, the house is, the second floor is more centered on the lot. But at the same time, I think that it, it really saves us from having, in other words, if you go, if you drive through, for instance, Seagate, you see a lot of houses that are two stories right up to the edge, now their, their side lot setbacks are much more generous, in other words, a lot smaller. So the houses are allowed to be built much closer together, but I'm just afraid that wind up with the, what we do have in Delray, which is a lot of houses that have two stories all going all the way up the sides.
Right.
We don't want Delray.
We don't want that.
We do not want Delray.
Well, in, in beach area, in the beach area now, you have.
We're not talking about beach area.
Well, no, I'm talking about.
We're talking about classes like for the smaller parts of the town, the smaller lots.
I know, but when you refer to Delray, you know, the guidelines that have been in place for the past ten years, you know, now require the additional five feet. So you don't see a lot of two-story stacking, but they do give you the option to two-story stack with an additional five feet setback. So not, not too many houses utilize that, because, you know, to lose that five feet is quite a bit of square footage, you know, on the ground floor. So you're seeing a lot of the stepping in as you're, as you're describing. I just think that, you know, maybe some percentages would be, you know, appropriate. That, you know, a certain percentage of the side elevation is either double stacked at, at, at some type of reasonable setback, whether it's five or seven, and a certain percentage required has to be at the minimum setback of, say, fifteen. And, and certainly on the, on the front as well. A certain portion allowed to be double stacked at the, whatever the, whatever the setback is, thirty feet or fifty feet. And then the balance, you know, with additional setbacks on the second floor. Because the percentage, when you, when you base it on a percentage, it, it gives you the flexibility, it's not saying exactly where you need to locate it. It could be, it could be dead center, it could be off to one side, but it, it allows the, the architect, if, if I have a, if I have a hundred feet. But it, it allows the, the architect, if, if I have a, if I have a hundred feet of building and I know thirty percent of it has to be set back additional, then I know, okay, I have seventy feet to work with when I'm designing a house if I want to double stack it and, and, and the other thirty feet, you know, I have to determine is going to be additional setback. And you start, you, you, you approach the design appropriately based on knowing the parameters. So just gives you a little bit more flexibility.
Mr. Jones, thanks for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Let, let me move forward then. I, I think we're all in agreement that Mr. Meyer will draft some language, the objective being to deal with the massing issue that we don't think we accomplish in the original language. Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that thing? Do we need to go on that? I don't think so.
No.
Not till you're ready.
Okay. Any other matters?
And we'll adjourn.
One second. Thanks, Paul.